Two minutes to air. One minute until livestream. One minute to air. We are now streaming.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. It's 7:00 PM. If the chamber will come to order, please. We'll take a moment for our friends and neighbors to find seats. As the fire marshal will assist us. The people are wet. I got you. I think, I think we got them. We'll make sure when they're proclaiming, when they're proclaiming. Friends, if you would, we apologize for those we can't accommodate with seats. There are monitors outside and it's probably going to thin out a little bit, a little later on. So we'll probably be able to accommodate everyone in a minute, in a few minutes. Thank you. If you'll secure the door, we're ready to proceed. Thank you. Thank you so much. Friends and neighbors, at 7:02 PM on September 18th, I'd like to officially call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order for the purposes of faithfully executing the business of the people of Durham. I want to say salute to my honorable colleagues and to friends and neighbors in the chamber, those watching on the platform and on television. Her Honorable Mayor O'Neill is obviously not here this evening. She is traveling. We send her our well wishes and certainly hope for her safe return. We're going to get started now with a moment of silence. I ask that you would please just assume a posture of silence. Thank you. I'm now going to yield to Councilmember Freeman and ask that she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, good evening. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Mayor O'Neill has requested an excused absence and has received one. Mayor Protam?
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, good evening, colleagues. We have a pretty exciting evening tonight. We've got a lot of special guests. We always have special guests in the room, but particularly tonight it's special. A number of proclamations. We're going to kick off with a proclamation for the 2023 South Durham Little League State Champion All-Star Teams. You can clap for that. Proclamation number two will be led by Councilmember Williams, and that will be in recognition of Guatemalan Independence Day. Proclamation number three will be read by Councilmember Hyman in recognition of World Alzheimer's Day. Proclamation number four will be read by Councilmember Caballero in recognition of Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month. And finally, we will have prepared comments from Councilmember Freeman on community partner development certification. We had a wonderful reception just before City Hall, so Councilmember Freeman will give us some wonderful comments about that. But I'm going to kick things off. I'm going to ask for the champion, South Durham Little League Champion All-Star Team, to please come up for this proclamation. Champions in the house. Give them, give them a hand. Proclamation, hear these words. Whereas, South Durham Little League is a key community partner for mentorship, recreation, and youth athletic development in the city of Durham. And whereas, South Durham Little League strives to teach and impart the values of the Little League motto, "character, courage, and loyalty to all children." And whereas, South Durham Little League's Machine Pitch Baseball All-Star Team posted a record of 11 wins and zero losses. Eleven wins and zero losses en route to their District VI and North Carolina State Championships. The team's roster included such players as Torren, Torren, Brown, Brown. Turn, turn that off, please. Torren Brown, Harrison Clark, Wes Good, Bryce Hayden, Winston Lakis, James Lennonbrink, Worth Shoot, Peyton Spock, Bennett Soltak, Eli Struck, Andrew Witt, and Bixby Yetman. And whereas, the team's coaches included such gentlemen as Andrew Lakis, BJ Lennonbrink, Steve Spock, and Brian Struck. And whereas, South Durham Little League's Little League Division Baseball Team posted a record of seven wins and zero losses en route to their District VI Championship and South Durham Little League's first ever, first ever state championship in the Little League Division. And, and whereas, the team's roster included such players as Michael Farrell, Cole Kiefer, John Kindem, Kendrick Hall, Nash Ferris, Thomas Keeney, Nolan Puckett, Lee Fitch Jr., Noah McDowell, Samuel Thomas, Charlie Siffring, and Kelby Mills. And whereas, the team's coaches included such gentlemen as Dante Farrell, Montez Thomas, and Jody Mills. And whereas, the team was afforded the opportunity to represent the state of North Carolina in Warner Robins, Georgia, at the Little League International Southeast Region Tournament. Now, therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby salute the South Durham Little League Board of Directors, the coaching staff, and members of the 2023 South Durham Little League State Champion All-Star Teams in Durham, and urge all residents in the city of Durham to join in saluting these outstanding athletes and the South Durham Little League coaching staff for a job well done. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the 18th day of September 2023. Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor. Durham, get your hands up. Make some noise for our team.
Good evening. My name's Dante Farrell. I'm the manager of the 12-year-old Little League Division State Champions. I had the privilege of being their coach this year, as I have a couple other years in the past. I know the city has a lot of pressing issues due to night. I just wanted to make, make a few short statements and just sum it up in four different categories. One, I'm thankful. I'm thankful to God for the tools, skills, and ability he gave me to take on this job and to lead these young men. I'm thankful to the mayor for recognizing these young men. This is very important for them. They worked hard for a long time, and we really do appreciate the council taking time to recognize them. I'm thankful to the parents of our players for bringing them every day, feeding them, hydrating them. It was a long, hot summer, three months, almost every day playing baseball, competing. Even as an adult, you know, you can get weary during your job. These, these young men had an important job. It was very important to them, and they worked very hard at it for a long time. And I'd also like to take some time to be, say that I'm thankful to the men who've led me, mentored me, coached me, and the men who served beside me, Montez Thomas and Jody Mills. The job couldn't be done alone, so I really appreciate all the work that they've put in. Secondly, I want to say that I'm grateful to our board. Several members are here tonight. I really appreciate them for affording me the opportunity to lead these young men and this team. I'm grateful for my wife. She's not here. She's away at baseball with my oldest child tonight. Go figure. But she sacrificed everything right alongside me, and I really appreciate her. I'm grateful for the, a lot of special anonymous people. They don't want me to say their names. They've really helped me to get through this summer season. I've had different challenges, and it's, it's not been an easy road, but we have very, very good people, very good support system around us. And I'm grateful for my supervisor at my other full-time job at the Durham Police Department, my captain, Tom McMaster, my chief, Patrice Andrews. They allowed me to use my volunteer leave and all of my vacation time to, to go to three tournaments with these boys and travel all over the state and still get my job done. But I had two full-time jobs all summer, and I can say that I'm really thankful to all of those people that helped me with that. Last two things I'll say is I'm proud, first of these boys for grinding it out, working hard, doing your job, doing everything we asked, even when you thought it was crazy, when you thought it was too much. You kind of see the, the fruit of your labor, so you're holding that banner in your hand. They gave you the rings on your fingers, and you earned every bit of it. I'm proud of our league for winning our first state championship. We've been around for 34 years, and it was, it's very hard to come by these, and we're, we're really glad for the support that we had there. And then I'm proud of our community partners for getting behind us with the support, the family t-shirts. I see some people in the crowd with those financial support, fundraising, donations. We couldn't have done any of this without everybody being behind us. And the last thing I'll say is I'm very hopeful that these young men will be inspired to do more great things in their life, to see that putting in the hard work, it definitely pays off. I'm hopeful we can do it again. We've got two 11-year-old young men on here to get another crack at it next year. We're hopeful that if their skills continue to increase, maybe they'll be a part of the journey, and we'll, we'll see how it goes. And then I'm hopeful that the other young men on the other side of the room will see these men to their, to their left and say that we can do the same thing in four years. Go ahead and make a run, boys. Y'all did a great job.
Thank you, Coach Dante, for getting us started. Tough act to follow, but here we are, four years later, so hopefully we'll, we'll follow in those footsteps again. My name's Andrew Lakis. I had the absolute pleasure of being the manager of our 8U South Durham Little League Machine Pitch Team. And I think there's not a whole lot more to say that, that Coach Farrell didn't touch on, but I think gratitude is at the forefront. Not only the people who are in this room, but the people who aren't. The umpires, the people who take care of the fields, the people who feed us and nourish us. It really takes a community to not only have a great baseball team and have a great season, but to really grow young people. And so I'm honored to have the chance to do that. I'm grateful for everybody that's poured into me and poured into our kids and our families. And I'm grateful to the city council and the mayor for letting us have this really, really special moment. It's a lot of fun to play baseball, but it's a lot of fun to represent something larger than yourself, and so we're grateful for that. And the last thing I'll leave you with is we started our season in May with four simple rules or values, if you will, for our Orange Crush 8U team. And we talked a little bit at the start that this was not really just about playing baseball. It was about learning lessons for life and leadership. Our four rules are pretty simple, and they're ones that honestly I come back to every day. These guys don't know that. They only know me as Coach Andrew. But the first is to have fun. The second is to be good teammates and take care of each other. The third is to work hard and give your best. And the fourth is to learn from our mistakes, because if we're making mistakes, we're trying, we're stretching ourselves, and our brain is actually teaching us the right way to do things. And honestly, I could not be more proud of the way these young guys came together and did all four of those things for about eight straight weeks in what was a very hot summer. And all the accolades that they've earned and all the celebrations they've had is just a testament to how hard they worked. And so we thank you for being here. Guys, I'm really proud of you, and I can't wait to do it again. Thank you. All right. Yeah, it's clearing out here.
We'll give it just a few moments to clear out and quiet down a bit. All right. Thank you all. I'll go ahead and proceed as soon as we get the door closed. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. I have the honor of reading in the proclamation on Guatemalan Independence Day presented to Orie Akila, Consul General of Guatemala. This proclamation reads, "Whereas, in recognition of this 202nd anniversary of the independence of the Republic of Guatemala, and whereas, the city's Guatemalan community enriches the cultural, economic, and civic opportunities available to residents and visitors to the city of Durham. And whereas, the city of Durham is enhanced by the continuous infusion of culture, art, tradition, and skills that our residents of Guatemala ancestry contribute to the greater Durham community. And whereas, the Consul General of Guatemala in North Carolina, a valuable community resource that will promote greater understanding and partnership with the local Guatemalan community in Durham, now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby, September 18th, 2023, as Guatemalan Independence Day in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the 18th day of September 2023." Thank you so much. Well, it's great to see you again, and please feel free to share your words.
Honorable Durham City Council, Mayor Protam, please extend my gratitude to Mayor O'Neill that will not be here today, but we are very grateful with the city of Durham, very grateful on how it has integrated our Guatemalan community as, as your own. So we are a big community, growing together in the city of Durham, in the state of North Carolina. So I thank you for this recognition. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. To my colleagues, to all the residents, it's good to see you. I'd like to ask Mary Susan Sewell, who is the Director of the Dementia Inclusive Incorporated, to come up. Thank you. Board number?
Okay, so yeah, Director.
Okay. "Dementia is a syndrome in which there is deterioration in memory, thinking, and behavior, and the ability to perform everyday activities. Alzheimer is the most common cause of dementia, and whereas dementia is the seventh-leading cause of death worldwide and the sixth-leading cause in North Carolina. And whereas there is no treatment currently available to cure most dementia or alter its progressive course, early diagnosis, care, and support can enhance the quality of life and well-being of persons with dementia. And whereas, the city of Durham supports the vision of a dementia-inclusive community where all persons with dementia are valued and fully supported in the pursuit of quality of life and their well-being. And whereas, the city of Durham invites you to join in partnerships, collaboration, and advocacy efforts to promote well-being inclusive and health equity for persons with dementia. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, September 21st, 2023, as World Alzheimer's Day in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance. Witnessed by my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this is the 18th day of September 2023."
Hi, my name is Susan Sewell, and I'm a board member of Dementia Inclusive Incorporated, a Durham nonprofit working to promote inclusivity for people living with dementia and their caregivers. Thank you for this proclamation. Dementia Inclusive will share it with the 150 people attending our all-day dementia awareness forum this Thursday, World's Alzheimer's Awareness Day. Our dementia-inclusive board includes representatives from various groups addressing the needs of people living with dementia. I represent families with, living with dementia. I am the daughter and granddaughter of women diagnosed with Alzheimer's. My mother, Mary Lou Sewell, was diagnosed in 2006 and passed away last year. Since we had already been through this once, we had plans in place, and mother moved to Durham so that I could be her nearby caregiver. As her dementia progressed and she could no longer attend events by herself, I also became her aide. I got permission from Crowsdale Village to allow me to go with her on the buses they provide for residents, giving her many more years of community engagement. We enjoyed our season tickets to Duke Women's Basketball Games. She used to play basketball in high school and college. As her disease progressed, sometimes mom cheered for any great play, not just for the home team. After I educated our surrounding fans about her progressing dementia, they were accepting and supportive. When I finally started attending alone, several people shared that they now missed her enthusiasm. There are, these are two examples of ways I made Durham accessible for my mother. Dementia Inclusive looks beyond these individual family efforts to a whole community educated and trained and modified to be inclusive for all. Thank you.
I just, I just want to take a point of privilege just to say that I lost my mother-in-law last year to dementia, and she was the reason why I literally put, applied to be on city council. And not only did I lose her, but I also lost my dad. So I would like to just have us to really definitely ask for more research and more funding around finding a cause and a cure. Not a cause, but excuse me, a cure. I'm a little emotional. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. When I start this, I'll be reading the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. If I could have the members of the Mayor Hispanic-Latino Committee join me and all those who are getting honored this evening. There's a lot of y'all. Thank you. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September 15th through October 15th to celebrate the histories, cultural, cultures, and contributions of Americans with ancestry from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the 2023 National Hispanic Heritage Month theme is Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, which reinforces the need to ensure diverse voices and perspectives are welcomed in decision-making processes, thereby helping to build stronger communities and a stronger nation. And whereas, the city of Durham embraces all our neighbors of Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx heritage, regardless of documentation status, and recognizes their profound and positive influence in the city of Durham. And whereas, the city of Durham recognizes the challenges the Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx community continues to face in our city and their resilience in creating solutions for future generations. And whereas, the city of Durham continues to recognize the effort led by community leaders, organizations, and allies to support the Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx community, and the city of Durham recognizes and celebrates the impact and efforts led by community organizations... recognizes and celebrates the impact and efforts led by community organizations and individuals to support the Hispanic community like Rosali Bocelli Hernandez of Durham Parks and Rec, Annabel Rosa, Annabel Rosa, Pablo Friedman of Durham Public Schools, and the Polanco family Sandra, Cecilia, Anna, Yessenia. And whereas the city of Durham celebrates and encourages the growing number of Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx resident leaders who are adding their voices to our city's important democratic centers such as city and county boards and commissions, community organizations, Durham Public Schools, nonprofits, and whereas the city of Durham is committed to improving existing opportunities and to open new doors for Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx residents of all backgrounds to participate in our city's participatory democracy. Now therefore, I Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2023, as Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to honor the distinct traditions of the Hispanic community and their contributions to our city, state, and nation by participating in relevant ceremonies, activities, and programs. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, this the 18th day of September 2023." And now I'd like to invite Maralys from the Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee to say a few words. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caballero. Good evening, City Council. I am Maralys Mercado, and I'm the Chair to the Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee. First, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the love we have for our patrias, our mother countries. We'd also like to thank the staff that have advised and aided us in so many ways that don't always get to shine. Mario Jescón, Philip Jordan from the Office of Neighborhood Improvement Services, Paola Roland and Javon Pratt, and Rachel Rudebores from the City Clerk's Office, and to our team of interpreters, one of them who is here today, Murtado, who is interpreting right now and making Durham a little bit more accessible, and of course to Councilperson Javier Caballero. Without their efforts and assistance, we would not be existing today. This year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, has us celebrating our foundation, our roots as a committee. Today, we have present and are owning two of the founders of our committee, who, starting in 2005, saw a need and began to pave the way for the Latino community to be served and to serve. Without the tireless work of Rosali and Annabel, this committee may not have existed. Please give them their flowers. And even if we would not have existed, they would continue to do the work. And as they continue to lay bricks, amazing people like Pablo Friedman, who is dedicated to the families of Durham Public Schools, and goes out of his way to ensure that Latino families have access to their needs, and to the Polanco sisters, Yessenia, Anna, Sandra, and Cecilia, who go out of their way, excuse me, to meet the needs of the Latino community by serving them through access to immigration law, through access to food, and sometimes just a little bit of help. They continue to carry the torch in service and in kindness, and to a community that is rich in humility, honor, grace, and perseverance. They all embody what inclusivity for a stronger nation means, and what we celebrate and hope that Durham continues to support their efforts and support for the entire Latino community regardless of age, documentation status, education level, gender, religion, or who they choose to love. And not just during this month, but throughout the year. It is an honor to serve with them and continue to show Durham that we are Durham, Somos Durham Siempre. Thank you.
My name is Annabel Rosa, and I want to say something really quick, bien rápido, y quiero decirles hola y gracias. So, everyone here can say hola, and everyone here can say gracias. I want to thank especially the friends that we found when we were creating the committee, because this wasn't, yes, we worked for years. Rosali was there from the very beginning. I came on board afterwards, but Mayor Bill Bell, if I didn't thank him, Lila Donelson, James Davis, who is here someplace, Constance Staso, Lenin Martinez, and Yolima Vargas. If I did not thank them, I would be a horrible human being. So, gracias, muchas gracias.
Thank you. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Community Partner Development Certificate, and if Ms. Delta Farrington would like to join me up here. Is she in? In 2021, the City of Durham's Neighborhood Improvement Services Department partnered with North Carolina Central University, Eagle Prize, to organize the Community Partner Development Certificate, certification. They committed to investing in ongoing education and relationships with communities who have been harmed by decision-making. True to the city's equitable community engagement blueprint, the course was designed and co-facilitated with the community leaders, staff, and staff worked every week to ensure classes were accessible and inclusive. This course is free to the students, thanks to the funding from NIS and the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. Over six months of classes in 2022, community members were prepared to lead engagement that resulted in the changes communities wanted to see. Students learned about the role of community partners and equitable community engagement, how to build strong community groups, and how to partner on city engagement, and also how to develop and present a funding proposal. Based on the success of last year's program, with the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, NCCU and the City of Durham, NIS hosted another cohort for 2023. Tonight, we want to recognize the graduates of the inaugural Community Partners Development Certification. If they could all please stand. I know there's about 11 of them here of the 12. I saw them a little bit earlier. At their final class, if y'all want to, at their final class on August 28, these 12 students each presented their proposals for community engagement. Their projects range from solutions to serve unhoused women and their children, to support hubs for historically underutilized Black businesses in Bragtown, for accessible community spaces for disabled and neurodegenerative people, and at the core of these proposals is a community member who sees a need in their neighborhood and is working to address it. Thank you to NIS and NCCU and all others who supported this work. These community members are more connected, supported, and prepared to lead authentic, more authentic, equitable, and community-centered engagement that is rooted in our sustainable city. I would say that I'd like to add that it would be great if we could actually get a presentation of this on our work session, because I don't think people fully understand how much time and effort went into all of their projects and how useful it'll be as we move forward. And so, it would be nice to see that. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening, for doing the work, and coming up with those plans. Thank you.
I want to thank my colleagues for some really excellent presentations, and all of you for being such a gracious audience. Let's give all of our awardees and honorees tonight a hand, please, if you would. All right, moving along, we will now recognize members of the council for announcements, and I'll look to my left. Hold on a second. To our guests who are here in the gallery, our rules of decorum do allow you to have placards or signs in the room. However, you can't block other people's vision. So, if you would, just hold them in a way that doesn't impede the vision of those around you or behind you. You can do so, but you are free to have placards in the room, but we ask that you would be mindful of those around you. You might want to just check with the folk around you, make sure they're all right. Announcements by the council, looking to my left once again. Looking to my right, Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish felices fiestas patrias a Guatemala, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Honduras, and Nicaragua. They had their Independence Day on September 15. Mexico, September 16, y a mi querido Chile, which today is Independence Day for Chile, and if you are Chilean, I hope you're celebrating well, because we celebrate hard at this time of year. So, that is, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, all right. On behalf of the mayor, just a couple of announcements. First off, Happy Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. We had a wonderful proclamation earlier this evening. I also want to send a shout out to the Durham Arts Council for an incredible Center Fest celebration this past weekend. Just shy of 35,000 people over two days. Let me tell you how simpatico it was between Hispanic Latino Heritage Month and Center Fest. It was raining, folk were out there, multiracial dancing salsa in the rain. It was a quintessentially Durham moment, so I want to congratulate our folk over at Durham Arts Council for the Center Fest, which was just recognized as the number one fine arts festival in the state of North Carolina. So, shout out to them. I also spent some time at a celebration this week on behalf of the mayor and the city, and I want to celebrate Lincoln Community Health Center, who is celebrating 50-plus years. They did not have an opportunity to have their celebration during COVID. There were employees there that went as high as from five years to 45 years working at Lincoln Community Health Center. For those of you that are adept in the history of Durham, Lincoln Hospital, I think it was 1968, the Lincoln Community Health Center took over the mantle that Lincoln Hospital once occupied. A sign of excellence, but it was also an indictment of the disparities in healthcare for low-income and Black folk in our city. So, while it stands as a paragon of excellence, it's also a reminder of our failures as a country. But I want to ask you to help me celebrate and wish happy anniversary to the folk over at Lincoln Community Health Center. I know they're watching, so if you would, join me in celebrating 50 years of service at Lincoln Community Health Center. And finally, tonight, I want to honor and recognize our workers who are in the room, and on behalf of our entire city, thank you. Thank you not only for your advocacy, but also for electing to return to work. I saw where you said you wanted to put the people of Durham first, and we see that, and we recognize that. Many of you will know that the council unanimously at our last work session decided to take up this issue at this coming work session on Thursday, the 21st, which we will. We will proceed in regular order tonight, but we want to encourage everyone that can to come on Thursday, September 21st, when her honor will be back, the mayor will be back, and a full council will be in session to engage and do what we said we were gonna do when we passed the budget. So, I invite you to come out September 21. We see you in the room. We thank you for your service. We thank you for keeping our city safe and clean and healthy, and yes, you do deserve it. You do deserve it. So, let's come Thursday and engage, let's come Thursday and engage in good faith, and I want to thank you all for being here. Thank you. Council, at this time, I'm going to recognize the city manager for...
Before we move forward, I did want to just make one announcement about the update for SCAD, just noting that the meetings that we do have lined up, I do want to make sure folks know the letter didn't get out today, but we do have a meeting set for next Tuesday, October 3, and October 17 at noon, and they will meet virtually. The clerk will notice these meetings. All can attend, and just know that the members participating, those who will be participating on the task force will be participating and will be reaching out around that. I didn't want to leave that without saying.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I want to thank you and Councilmember Williams both for leading this important work. We're going to suspend for just a moment until the chamber is in order. All right, let me thank those of you in the chamber and watching on a platform or television for your patience tonight. Very busy night, but we're going to get it done. At this time, I'm going to yield to our city manager for any priority items she may have. Good evening, Madam Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and members of the Durham City Council. I have one priority item for you this evening, agenda item number 21, Consolidated Zoning Map Change 2610 South Miami Boulevard. This item is being referred back to the City-County Planning Department. That is all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I'll now yield now to our city attorney for any priority items she may have. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. It's good to be with you. The city attorney's office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'll yield to our city clerk for any announcements, priority items, pardon me, she may have. Good evening, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and good evening, City Council. The city clerk's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you very much. The city manager's item is noted. Friends, at this time, I'm going to read into the record our consent agenda. I'll actually read our entire agenda, but I'm going to start with our consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are matters that have already been considered by the council at a prior work session. The council's had an opportunity to do a deep dive, and these matters may be passed with one single vote. However, any member of the public is free to pull that item if they have any questions or comments that are germane to that particular item, and certainly council members have that right as well to pull items. With that said, I'll begin the reading of our consent agenda. Item number one, Durham Affordable Housing Implementation Committee appointments. Item number two, Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, Discover Durham appointments. Item three, Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee appointment. three, Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee Appointment. Item four, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Item five, Durham Workers Rights Commission Appointment. Item six, Go Triangle Board of Trustees Appointment. Item seven, Priority Dispatch Corporation Quality Performance Review Service Agreement. Item eight, Priority Dispatch Corporation Extended Service Plan Agreement. Item nine, Interlocal Memorandum of Agreement for Urban Search and Rescue Task Force Eight. Item number 10, Contract with Universal Protection Service LLC for Armed and Unarmed Security Guard Services. Item 11, Stop Loss Insurance Contract for Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina for Financial Protection under the Self-Funded Group Health Plan. Item 12, Utility Extension Agreement.
Excuse me. I just wanted to acknowledge on item 11, I didn't want to pull it, but I did want to note that the workforce statistics for this company, their employees are more than half women, and they're amazing diversity, and I wanted to just highlight that point. Just noting that they're also very, they're a good example of equity and inclusion as well. And that's Blue Cross and Blue Shield, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councilmember. Item 12, Utility Extension Agreement with Newman Land Company LLC to serve the Heidelberg Street Water and Sewer Extension Project. Item 13, Contract Amendment Number One for SW 89C Project Management and Inspection Services. Item 14, Stormwater Infrastructure Repairs. Item number 15, Contract with SZC Logistics, Inc. for Recycling and Disposal of Scraped Tires. Item number 16, Supplemental Agreement Number One for Roundabout Design Services at Marine Road and American Drive. Item number 17, Grant Project Ordinances for Transportation. Item 18, Professional Engineering Services Contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. of the Carolinas for the Western Intake Partnership Program Manager Project Amendment Number Three. That ends the reading of our consent agenda under General Business Agenda, Public Hearings. Item number 21 has been referred back to the administration. Item number 22, Consolidated Annexation Lumley Road Multifamily. Item number 23, Zoning Map Change 2309 and 2315 Spargo Road. Item number 24, Zoning Map Change Shannon at Old Chapel Hill. That is the end of our published agenda. Colleagues, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
A motion?
I heard a motion from councilmember Williams and a second from councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes six to zero.
Thank you so much, and thank you, colleagues. The consent agenda is adopted, consent items are adopted. We will now move to our General Business Agenda, Public Hearings. Item number 21 has been referred back. We will move to item number 22, Consolidated Annexation Lumley Road Multifamily, and we'll hear from the staff now. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, sorry, Mayor Protem Middleton and honorable council members. Good evening, Brooke Roper with the City-County Planning Department. Happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, planning staff would like to state for the record that all planning department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the planning department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Jamie Schwadler of Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein LLP for one parcel of land totaling 47.67 acres and located at 5751 Lumley Road. This annexation petition is for contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The intent of this annexation is to connect to city water to allow the construction of up to 480 dwelling units on the site, with at least 3% of the units being designated as income-restricted. The current zoning is residential rural and commercial general. For the initial city zoning of this site, if annexation is approved, the applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential 10.060. This request received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on April 11th, 2023, by a vote of eight to one. The properties are currently designated office on the future land use map. The proposed PDR 10.060 zoning is inconsistent with the designated use shown on the flum, the future land use map. If the proposed zoning is approved, the future land use map will change to medium-high-density residential. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you so much for, for that report. I'm going to officially declare this public hearing open, but before I go to speakers and the applicant, I'm going to yield to see if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for staff. Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant. I have three cards, but they're all indicating applicant status, Earl Llewellyn, Welzy Westwood, and of course, Jamie, we see you. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
Good evening. I think six to seven minutes would be fine. There might be some additional questions that you have for the extended team.
Sure, we'll start with 10, please. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Middleton and members of the council. I'm Jamie Schwadler with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein at 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant tonight. Al Nyer is joining me tonight. I'm accompanied by both Justin Parker and Daniel Gunter of Al Nyer, as well as our engineers with Kimberly Horn, who are available to answer questions about traffic and technical issues. I'm also joined by Mac McCarley, who's available to answer any questions with respect to county sewer and some of those issues that were raised at the Planning Commission. And then finally joined by Avalon Bay, who is a long-term owner and operator of multifamily communities and is working with Al Nyer to bring this project to Durham. They're excited about being a part of the community and having this opportunity to offer income-restricted units to the council, as well as some forward-looking environmental commitments that you'll see tonight. Can y'all see the presentation?
You do now.
Okay. As Brooke mentioned, this is a one parcel request that's rather large, 48 acres, on the edge of Durham County where it borders Wake and just two miles away from Briar Creek, so approximate to many different services and commercial uses. The area is largely vacant today and is in your suburban tier and is in an area that is kind of surrounded by other development and some additional changes that you'll see coming down the pike. Some of those include some important transportation projects. You'll see the project is there. Our project is in the red star in the center of your screen. There are two transportation projects that have been identified along the north side, so around 70 and the expansion there, as well as the Aviation Parkway North Durham Parkway Expansion Project that runs just to the east of our site. So we're placing new residents close to some existing facilities and then some important planned facilities that you have coming down in the future. It's also consistent with the draft place type map, and you'll see us analyzing the request consistent with that place type map because that is going forward and not yet adopted, but we think it's important to reflect what this, the community and the area are looking toward as they place new housing in Durham. And for this particular site, the draft place type map designation is mixed residential neighborhood. In the way that we brought our project forward, we're consistent with that designation by placing new housing on typically undeveloped or forested land, adding a diversity of housing types, which you'll see in a new commitment since the Planning Commission, and anticipating apartments and townhomes, which is consistent with the request that you see before you tonight. The zoning is a mix of rural residential and commercial general. I believe your staff report indicates there's somewhere around 60 or 61 single-family homes that could be put there today with the PDR request. In that change, we would be seeking a PDR request of up to 480 townhomes with a mix that's appropriate for both townhomes and, and, excuse me, 480 dwelling units with a mix of townhomes and apartments. With respect to annexation, there is an annexation petition that's a part of this request. As you can see, this property is surrounded by city jurisdiction on nearly all sides, except for the east where it's surrounded by Wake County, and so it fills in an important hole in the edge of this area and will complete services and provide for more consistent provision of utilities in this area of the county. The key text commitments are listed here, and these were selected very carefully to reflect not only what we understood the issues to be at the outset of this case, but watching this council and what they asked us to do throughout the course and what they've asked other applicants to do to trace the significant housing demands and significant environmental concerns that the council has faced over time. And so we've carefully selected those to bring those to you tonight, including one we're most proud of, which is a commitment for income-restricted dwelling units, 3% of units at 80% AMI for 20 years. In addition, due to the experience of Avalon Bay, we've worked with your staff to create some changes in the language of how those affordable units would be provided, or income-restricted units, excuse me, and a commitment there'll be a comparable in square footage, number of bedrooms, and external appearance as the market rate units. We've committed to a maximum of 480 units, but within that mix, a minimum of 200 apartments and a minimum of 50 townhomes. That was in response to a concern raised by one of the commissioners at Planning Commission to have a commitment to the mix of the product type. With respect to transportation, we're providing a 10-foot shared path for the full frontage of the site along the north side of Lumley Road. That's consistent with the changes that you've seen come forward from planning and transportation to try to consolidate bicycle and pedestrian uses where possible. We're also committing to install a traffic light, a page road, and a page road extension if warranted by the traffic in this area. With respect to erosion control, you'll see four important summarized commitments on your screen that reflect what this council is marching towards in terms of draft environmental protections. We went ahead and added those proactively, watching what's happened throughout the, throughout the council's time, and that includes a volume of sediment basin being increased by 150%, flocculins being incorporated to reduce turbidity, skimmers being sized to de-water the basin in a minimum of four days, and a double row of silt fence provided along stream buffers. In addition, we're also committing to post-development runoff rate for the 100-year storm rate will not exceed the pre-development rate, and that specific condition was done in response to a concern raised by Commissioner Sees at the Planning Commission to make sure that we increased the, the stormwater treatment. So many of those are changes in response to concerns that were raised or commitments that exceed your code. This slide just simply shows many of those commitments in graphic form. At the top of the page, you'll see there, along the, the northern boundary of the site, is a significant restriction due to riparian buffer in areas that kind of limit access, and so we've tried to cluster the buildings closer toward, toward the south and east portions of the site while still providing the site access to connect to that future Aviation Parkway extension that we know is going to be important to move people throughout this part of the county. And as a result of all of those commitments, there's a significant cost that comes with that, and we wanted to try to estimate that so that you really see not only the value of adding those at the zoning stage, but the real cost and, and value to the city. The traffic signal that I mentioned has an estimated cost of $350,000. The 10-foot shared path is an estimated cost of $175,000, and the erosion control and stormwater improvements, we estimate to be worth about $200,000. In addition to that value, public improvements were discussed following the Planning Commission and the concerns that the county raised there, and we'd like to thank the county for working with us on some of those issues since the Planning Commission, those were raised. We're now at a point where we have discussed and negotiated a utility extension agreement with the county to bring sewer to not only this site, but to make sure the capacity is designed and can handle additional flow within the basin that you see in the black outline there on your screen. So not only making improvements for our site, including the new lift station, but we'll set the way for development in this area and importantly, provide predictability for DOT as they plan their expansion of 70 and the Aviation Parkway extension. The total cost for those improvements at this point is estimated to be 2.8 million. So together with the text commitments I just listed, an investment of 3.52 million just in those additional text commitments above and beyond what you would typically see in the cost of developing the apartments and the townhomes themselves. With those commitments, the request is consistent with the draft comprehensive plan. The staff report does an excellent job of listing all of those consistency statements, and so I don't, won't go into that in detail. But just did want to summarize, we did receive a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission, recognizing a lot of those commitments and the significant value thereof, and that was before we went and added some of the 100-year storm and worked out the issues with the county and the sewer. So we're proud of the commitments that we've put before you today, the income-restricted units, the adding to the housing variety and the mix of housing here, as well as all of those increased environmental protections that we know are near and dear to this council's heart. We're happy to answer any questions, and our team, of course, is available to go into further detail. We thank you.
Thank you so much. The only cards that I have, all of the cards indicate applicant. Was there anybody else on your team who wanted to speak, or?
Will be available to answer any questions.
Very good. All right, this is, Madam Clerk, have you seen anyone online who wants to chime in? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in chamber with us that wishes to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. Would you come to the podium and just state your name, and you'll have three minutes? And after, would, would you mind filling out a card after? Oh, okay. This isn't your first rodeo, all right.
Good evening. My name is Karen Alexander, and my biggest problem that I see with this is that there's no stores. Stores, grocery stores, that's going to be coming with income to the Durham taxpayers, not the Wake County, okay? At that line of Wake County and Lumley, everybody's going to go to Briar Creek. That's not a Durham tax base. So therefore, we taxpayers don't get any relief, because if they take their dollars for groceries to the Wake County, we get nothing. So therefore, somewhere in there needs to be some grocery stores and other stores so Durham can have some income coming in, so that everything is not on taxpayers to pay for these expansions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And if you just leave your card with the clerk.
I will.
Thank you for being with us. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here that has not spoken that would like to be heard on this? To the applicant, do you want to respond to anything you've heard from the speaker or anything else you want to add? You don't have to, I'm just, just curious.
I'm happy to. I think the staff report does a great job of providing the tax base that would result from the, the development of the apartments and townhomes here. Happy to answer further questions.
All right. Colleagues, I'll turn to you now if any councilmembers have any questions or comments. Councilmember Holzheim.
Hi, thank you. Question. Just want to up clarity on, it is 480 dwellings, right?
Correct.
And I know you kind of separated it down to 200 apartments, and you said...
50 townhomes. So it's a maximum of 480 and then provided minimum, so there's a little flexibility of what those final numbers could be, but it was important at the, a Planning Commission to have a minimum commitment of both types, so not just all apartments or all townhomes.
And the affordable housing piece is 3% of that total?
3% of the total 480. Correct.
And are these for purchase or?
The design, the, the plan would be for rent.
Rent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Caballero, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson, were you raising your hand? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going left to right. Okay, sorry. Councilmember Caballero, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the really great presentation. Jamie, I had a couple of questions for you. Sorry, the mic is being weird. First, I really appreciate the slide presentation. I appreciate the thoroughness of it. When we met, I did ask and just, you know, just shared that some of our more recent affordable housing commitments have been at a higher percentage, and I know that there was going to maybe be some conversation on the development side to see if, if we could tweak any of those numbers to a higher commitment, if possible, and so was just curious if, if we had any resolution on that.
I do. I'd like to just confer and make sure I get the numbers right, if that's okay. Are there additional questions you'd like to ask first, or would you like me to confer?
No, I'd love the answer to that.
So we confirm we can change that commitment to 5% of units at 60% AMI for 20 years. So increasing from 3% to 5% is an increase from about 14 units to about 25, I believe, of units that calculated at that 480. So the commitment itself would be 5% of those maximum units at 60% AMI.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, and I would just ask, I think, what would be the difference if you were to go to 15% at 72 units?
15% of what?
Of, instead of 5% to 15%.
How many units that would be?
No, I know how many units. Why would you limit it to 5% rather than 15%?
Well, there's a, a challenge that we face in trying to make sure that we can get these units built, and it's, it's frankly, with the financing and the significant constraints, it was hard for us to get to five. The commitment was three, and so to go to 15 wouldn't work for the, the... And so to go to 15 wouldn't work for the cost of development. And simply when you add in all of those things in a normal case, and then you add in the sewer commitments that we're pursuing with the county at 2.8 million, the total of the 3.25 million that you don't see in other cases, it's just not possible to increase it past the 5% that pushed our boundaries.
And just for breakdown purposes, so are you saying that if you do 480 units, 50 will be townhouses? And if you do 200 units, 50 will be townhouses? So regardless of how many units maximum or minimum, that the 50 townhouses will be there?
It will be a minimum of the 200 apartments and a minimum of the townhouses.
And that is all rental, the townhouses as well? There's no ownership options?
That is the current plan, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember, colleagues, anyone else?
I did have a question for staff. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the lift station upgrade or relocation. Is that cost on the city side or just on the developer's side?
I'm going to defer to the applicant on that one. Thank you.
The sewer issue is a county issue. So water will come from the city, but that's a typical utility extension agreement. The sewer is a county-only issue, and so we're working directly with the county. It doesn't involve city utilities.
Okay. But for the lift station changes, the upgrades and relocation, who covers that cost?
The developer is at this point.
Okay.
And that is how the agreement's been negotiated, and that's the assumption.
And will that give access, will it create greater access in that area?
Sewer access? Yes, it will.
That was all, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah, thank you. I don't really have much to say on this one. It was a very thorough process, but we have gotten in the habit of really demonizing where we should be trying to build partnerships. I think this is a really great opportunity in which we're increasing infrastructure capacity for the ever-growing population that we have. So just wanted to say thank you on the record for having a thorough presentation. But not only your presentation, but the actual options you're bringing or the infrastructure capacity that you're bringing with new living units. And also thank you for increasing to 5%. I know it may seem low, but we never talk about the financing behind all these things either. So with all of the infrastructure, all of the enhancements, as well as the affordable housing, we're headed in the right direction when it comes to our development as a partnership. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Thank you for your excellent questions, colleagues. Just one from me. What is the, I'm sorry. What is the, I think, what is the calculus behind a 20-year sunset as opposed to the traditional 30 on the affordable units?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think when we're, you know, the span of development and when we kind of go into this, we're watching the markets and how the financing is available. And those, you can think of the percent of units or the number of units and the percent of AMI and the years as three different levers. And you can kind of tighten one, but then you have to have a little bit more flexibility on the other. And so where we're able to say, we're going to provide more units, we might not be able to get financing if we're restricting all three of those levers at the same time. And so what we're trying to do is providing the 20-year, we know that's been kind of a trend that's been important, but really heard loud and clear from council and a request to increase the number of units and try to decrease the AMI percentage. And so really put an emphasis there and wanted to keep that 20-year where it was because we want this project to get financed and built. And so we think that that's the right mechanism to really focus on the two of providing more housing at the lower percent of AMI and leaving the years where they are.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Freeman, sure.
Thank you. That's a great question, Mayor Protem. I would just say, how do you evaluate those levers? Is there, like, is there some process that you're sharing with the city on that? Or is there, is it just all internal?
It's, I mean, it's mostly internal, and it's mostly with people much more well-versed in finances than myself. It really is a complicated balance between potential lenders and how the pro forma is shaping up. And when you add, you know, each of these things in, especially with the sewer getting resolved during this stage, it doesn't usually get resolved until later, those are all costs that we have to kind of factor in now. And so we're trying to talk to different lenders or who we think will be investing in the project or lending for the project and feel out the comfort zones. Obviously, during the life of this case, that changed dramatically because the interest rates changed dramatically.
I really appreciate that. This extra bit of information could be helpful for future conversations. I think making a performer available that could kind of give some of, give council a reflection on how this kind of financing conversation moves. Just an example, like in general, to say if it's at 5% or 15% or 10%, you know, for affordable housing, whether you're at 60, 80, or 120% AMI, like what it would look like financially. Because I do think that there are tools or financing resources that we could probably figure out actual partnership with that could be supportive in making something like this happen at 15% as opposed to 5. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Caballero.
Sorry. This is completely privately funded, correct?
Correct.
You're not getting any gap financing in any kind of way from government?
No.
Okay. So it becomes a lot harder, like if we subsid, somebody's got to subsidize that unit, right? So essentially, right now, somebody in the private market is subsidizing that. And so I think the conversations around financing and funding, we just have to be really transparent. If we're going to ask for more, then we've got to be able to come up with the government money to provide that subsidy. If, you know, at a certain point, that's what a lot of cities are doing. It ends up being public money, especially if we're thinking about 30% AMI, which we know we desperately need in Durham. You're not going to be able, there's very few ways that you're going to be able to do that with just private market money. And so I do want to just share that for the, in this conversation, which has been robust and good, that we're not even going to get to see the pro forma as counsel because the project wouldn't even get to us. Because if it's not even penciling out at the beginning stages, then you're not even going to bother coming and trying to get in development process that costs a significant amount of money. So I appreciate the move. I know we ask, and I really actually appreciate the transparency in the slides with what are the upfront costs? Because I think sometimes there's a little bit of, you know, it's just kind of opaque, and it's hard for folks in the community to understand what's, what the decisions involve. So again, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before I close the public hearing, I'm going to ask staff if you want to clarify the amended, the language on the amended proffers.
Yes, thank you. We had two additional proffers for tonight, the first being an increase to 5% income-restricted units at 60% AMI, and the second being a minimum of 50 townhouses and 200 apartments, I believe.
The minimum should be, should already be in the development plan. The minimum 200 apartments and 50 townhomes that's on the screen should already be a commitment in there. If that's not what you're seeing on your version, please let me know.
Okay, yeah. It might be an older version, but we will get with you afterwards to ensure it's added.
Is the 20 years reflected as well in the, do we need, does that need to be reflected in the language?
Yes, that, that's, that has to be included in the language, yes.
We got it, right?
Yes.
Anything else? We good? All right, I'm going to declare, I'm sorry, councilmember, go ahead, ma'am.
All right, I just wanted to give a little bit more clarity on the performer conversation and just state that there are foundations that do offer funding, and they are private. And it doesn't necessarily have to be government to subsidize. It can actually be a partnership, just so we're clear, because I know some folks are ignorant around finance.
Thank you. Councilmember Hyman.
Just lastly, so I was kind of on the fence with this one because it's 480, it's just a lot in the area. But I thank you for your increase of the affordable housing to the 5%. So I will be supporting this project.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm going to officially declare this public hearing closed. The matter is now back before the council. Final questions or comments from colleagues for staff? Councilmember Williams.
Actually, not for staff, just a general comment about the taxes. So the property taxes will get a grid bit. I feel you on the sales tax, so to the resident comment.
Thank you, colleagues. This matter requires three motions. The first, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Lumley Road multifamily into the city of Durham effective September 30th, 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Al Nayar LLC. So move. I heard a motion from councilmember Hyman, second from councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. I'll entertain motion number two to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of the residential rural and commercial general county jurisdiction and establishing the same as planned development residential 10.060 city jurisdiction.
No moves.
Second.
Heard a motion from councilmember Hyman and a second from councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 5 to 1. Is that a affirmative? I'm sorry, 6-0.
Thank you. Motion number three to adopt a consistency statement as required for, as required by NCGS 160D-605, statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
Second.
Heard a motion from councilmember Hyman and a second from councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. That matter is disposed of. We move on now to item number 23, zoning map change 2309 and 2315 Sparger Road. We will now hear the staff report.
Mayor Protem Middleton and honorable council members, good evening. Brooke Roper with the City County Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Pam Porter of TMT LA Associates for one parcel of land totaling 5.08 acres and located at 2309 and 2315 Sparger Road. The current zoning is office and institutional with a graphic development plan. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial general with a textual development plan to allow all uses under the commercial general zoning district except indoor firing ranges, nightclubs, and bars. The properties are currently designated commercial on the future land use map. The proposed CGD zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. This request received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on May 9th, 2023 by a vote of 8 to 0. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. The first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance. The second is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you so much. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, but before I go to comments from the applicant or any residents or neighbors, I'm going to ask if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for staff. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is open. I have one, it's Pam Porter. Thank you so much. Good evening. How much time do you anticipate for your presentation?
Five minutes.
All right.
I'll be quick.
Put seven minutes on the clock, please.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. With me tonight are Donnie King and Blake King, they're the property owners, as well as Will Work with Summit Engineering. They're available for questions if you have any for them. So to quickly recap, our request is to rezone the five-acre parcel at the corner of Sparger Road and Hillsborough Road from office and institutional to commercial general. Both the future land use map and place type maps identify this property as a commercial use. The purpose of our rezoning request is simple. The clients, the owners, have bought this property, and they want to expand their tenant base. There currently no plans to tear down and rebuild the existing building or do any building expansion. They just want more tenant options for the future. We have conditioned out firing range as well as nightclub and bar, and these uses will, of course, be prohibited if the zoning is approved. And this was a result of our meeting with the neighbors. And we've also made additional commitments to roadway improvements as noted in the tax commitments that you have. When we started this process, we were only able to commit to use. And as we were going through the rezoning review with the staff, the additional commitments were, it was approved to add additional commitments other than use, so we got some road improvements added to our list of tax commitments. And I would like to note that the owners of this property are local. They both live and work in Durham and own other properties in the city, including across Sparger Road. They're not out-of-town developers coming to rezone, develop, and leave. They're here, and they have a vested interest in the community. And they do plan on keeping this property for a long time, and they want to make sure that any future use is compatible with the existing land uses in the area. We request your support tonight for our rezoning, and I'm available for questions. And again, the owners and the engineer are here as well, if you have questions for them. And I only needed a minute and a half.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for being here. I don't have any cards, Madam Clerk, for anyone to speak on this. And I don't see anyone in queue on our virtual platform. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in chamber tonight that wishes to speak on this item? Anyone in chamber? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll yield to my colleagues. Anyone on council have any questions or comments for the applicant? Yeah, councilmember Johnson, of course.
Thank you. I'm just wondering what is currently here at this location?
It's currently like a gymnasium-type use right now. And they have a tenant in there right now. But again, they just, if the tenant leaves, they want to be able to rent out to other folks and not just be kind of pigeonholed into what the current zoning allows them to do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And it really, I'll tell the story quick because I know that the owners have told this story before. So kind of, this whole idea of rezoning came from, there's a smaller building on the site that is a electric contractor, and a florist wanted to rent that building from them and open a florist shop. And they figured out through some research that that wasn't allowed because of the current zoning. Because a lot of the retail uses are not allowed in commercial general. So that's sort of what spurred this whole thing, is they wanted to be able to rent to folks and lease to folks who otherwise wouldn't be allowed to. Just to give a little history on our request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? I have a quick question about the list. Is the list of exclusions exhaustive? Did anyone in the neighborhood bring up internet cafes? Are those gaming, you know, they're called internet cafes, but those gaming, electronic gambling spots?
Not during our neighborhood meeting, that didn't come up.
Okay. Is that an exclusion you considered as well in addition to the bars and nightclubs and firing range?
I may have to defer to staff. I'm not sure if that is a specific use in the UDO in terms of internet cafe.
It comes up a lot in a, in a community. Not to suggest that yours was deficient, that it didn't come up there, but staff, do you want to? I should say it comes up frequently.
Good evening. Sarah Young with the Planning Department. So internet cafe is not a use that's defined in our ordinance. We would have to, I'd have to do a little research and see what we've classified them as in the past. There hasn't been one under my tenure, so I'd have to do a little research. Whenever a use comes up that is not classified, typically the planning director needs to make an interpretation under the ordinance of what's the closest matching thing. So I haven't had any under my tenure. I'd have to go back and see what my predecessors classified it as.
Seems like I recall some conversations where that type of establishment has come up. And it was, it was, the developer willingly said no. I don't know what we coded his as, but I, it seems like I do recall it coming up. That's on me, not you, but, but...
They could certainly, they can certainly proffer to restrict that use tonight. That is a possibility.
Okay. Okay. Is that something on your possible wish list to use there, put there?
So I have the use list here, and I think the closest category to that would be electronic gaming operations, I think, is kind of what you're leading to. Yeah. We would add that as a prohibited use. I think that that's fine. I haven't heard the term internet cafe in a really long time. So I was... I was.
You need to hang out with me sometime.
I thought, is there something I missed on here? But I think that's what you were alluding to, and we're more than willing to prohibit that use as part of our.
That's a euphemism. Thanks. Staff, if, will capture that proffer? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else in the chamber who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm going to declare this public hearing, close the matters back before the council. Colleagues, anyone else? Questions or comments on this? Seeing, seeing none, this matter requires two motions. I will entertain motion number one to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the office and institutional with a graphic development plan, Eno River District B, and establishing the same as commercial general with a textual development plan, Eno River District B. Heard a motion from Councilmember Freeman and a second from Councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Would you please close the vote and report, report out?
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll entertain motion number two to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS one sixty D dash six zero five.
Second.
Heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
And the second motion passes six zero.
Thank you, colleagues. That matter is discharged. We move on now to item number twenty-four, our last item on our published agenda, zoning map change, Shannon at Old Chapel Hill, and we'll hear now the staff's report.
Good evening. Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Jeremy Anderson of Thomason Hutton for two parcels of land totaling three point zero eight acres and located at thirty-six forty-one Shannon Road and thirty-six thirty-eight Old Chapel Hill Road. The current zoning is residential suburban eight and residential suburban ten. The applicant proposes to change this designation to residential compact with a development plan and commercial general with a development plan to allow, to allow up to forty-three townhouse units and seventeen multifamily units vertically integrated with three thousand five hundred square feet of commercial uses. The properties are currently designated design district on the future land use map. The proposed RCD and CGD zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. Due to rescheduling this case to a city council meeting prior to the comp plan, comprehensive plan adoption hearings, the current staff report items reflect the draft place type map instead of the future land use map designations. However, the vote tonight should reflect the future land use map designation. The Durham Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of twelve to zero at the July eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. This first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance. The second is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you so much for that report. I'm going to officially declare this public hearing open before I go to the gallery, to the applicant, or any residents or neighbors. I'm going to see if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for the staff on this matter. Councilmember Hyman, please.
Did you talk about any proffers or was there any proffers in?
I did not mention the proffers at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues? All right. Is the applicant present? Scott Harmon, good to see you. If you'll come up. How much time do you anticipate needing?
Maybe five minutes.
Five? All right. Put seven on the clock, please. All right. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Scott Harmon with Center Studio Architecture. With me are Dan Jewell and Jeremy, the artist formerly known as CJT, but now with TNH, whatever, and Nathan Robenberg with VHB, our traffic engineer. Thank you for considering our application. We hope our community engagement process and text commitments earn your support. We held three public community meetings with a total of ninety-seven attendees. We continue to engage privately with our immediate neighbors, Dr. Richard McMillan and his congregation of Markham Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. They are a black church in a predominantly white neighborhood and are most directly impacted by our project. Their chapel predates most of the adjacent neighborhoods and institutions. Our private conversations are ongoing and create breathing room to prioritize their voice and concerns. Dr. McMillan also graciously hosted our most recent in-person community meeting. We provided childcare and fifty box meals for anyone in the surrounding community whose attendance conflicted with the needs of their family. We mailed postcards to every owner, organization, and rental household within a thousand feet, announcing the community meetings, the planning commission meeting, and inviting folks to our website, shannon@oldchapelhill.com for further engagement. The website is updated regularly. It shows the next upcoming meetings, presents our community responses, receives comments and questions, allows folks to register for updates via postal mail, SMS messages, and/or email. The website also includes a link to the city's social pinpoint platform in case people prefer to register in that system. The website includes document links to our site concept drawing, the development plan under consideration tonight, the full version of our traffic study, a storm watershed exhibit, the postcard mailer, and minutes from our community meetings. The website concludes with a diary and timeline of all of our past and future engagement milestones. The three most prevalent community concerns, councilmember, are proffers, if you will, have been traffic, stormwater, and affordable housing. This has been consistent throughout the entire process. Text commitments six, seven, and eight on our development plan are our specific responses to these concerns. Number one, although a TIA is not required for a project of this size, we hired VHB to measure existing traffic counts, model our proposed development, and make recommendations for improvements. We propose an always stop pending city and DOT approval, and we will pay for that. Some, number two, some of our site currently watersheds into the valley neighborhood, which experiences rainfall events that overwhelm their infrastructure. We are committed to redirecting some of this runoff away from their watershed. The final version of this commitment was carefully worked out with the manager of Stormwater Development Review and neighborhood representatives in advance of the Planning Commission to make sure that we had the exact technical language that defined what success would look like for us in the adjacent neighborhood. And finally, our affordable housing commitment includes one townhome and three apartments. That's a total of four dwelling units out of the seventy, sixty that are proposed on the site. These are for thirty years at sixty percent AMI if rented and eighty percent if sold. Our design is mixed use with missing middle housing and walkable proximity to existing neighborhoods and commercial uses. We will maximize density and land utilization with townhomes and a retail building with apartments on the upper floors. In addition to our affordable housing commitment, our units will be more affordable by design and provide a welcome and needed diversity of housing types in this part of southwest Durham. Lastly, we appreciate the Planning Commission's twelve to zero recommendation of approval and their kind and encouraging words about our community engagement model. We welcome inquiries from other practitioners looking to improve their engagement strategies. We think this is a good project for Durham, a good project for this neighborhood, and that our process has been thorough, transparent, equitable, and responsive, and we ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll reserve some time if you want to respond after we've heard from our neighbors. I have two cards, none for, no proponent cards. I have two opponent cards, and I'll call those names and ask that you, you folk would ready yourself, if you're in chamber, to come to the microphone. My first card is W. Holt Anderson and Richard Moon. Are you here? Okay. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson? If you'll state your name, sir, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to come down. Opposition is not totally my concerns. The concerns are, well, I know I only had two options. My concerns are, having lived in that area for forty-seven years, I've drive that intersection of Old Chapel Hill Road by the post office and down toward the southwest Durham library, and then to get to Martin Luther King or to University Drive, and the traffic there just backs up. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that area, but it's a great concern to me. The second one is, is safety. There, the developer has committed to sidewalks around his part of it, but there's very little any other sidewalks on Old Chapel Hill Road or Shannon. There's a few on Shannon. So that needs to be a concern of the city. The lack of public transportation in that area, more and more people are taking advantage of the economic development of this area and needing to go to work in different modes. And they, they can walk down to Target or some of the other places to catch some of the public transportation. But again, it's a concern of mine. The, we're not opposed to the development of affordable housing and appreciate the developer's commitment to that, and also the public hearings they've had. I've attended those, and they're very open about what they want to do. I'm not committed or at ease that a three-way stop sign area is going to work at Shannon and Old Chapel Hill. We need sidewalks there. We need to take in pedestrian, concerns about crosswalks, and also bikers who frequent that area. The traffic is growing and has continued to grow over those forty-seven years. So I have concerns about that and the safety primarily. So maybe I'll look at signalization, roundabout. I'm not sure what the right solution is. Your traffic people and others might be able to help us. So I'm pleased and thankful to have this opportunity to talk with you about those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for being with us. Mr. Moon? Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name, you'll have three minutes as well. Thank you.
Yes, Richard Moon. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers for hearing us. I would like to emphasize what Mr. Anderson just said, and that is that traffic in that area is already very heavy. I drive home through that intersection every day, and there are usually six to eight to ten cars backed up at the stop sign. The notion of a three-way stop sign is, I would say, ridiculous. I would have to say that the developers did indeed have open sessions, and I attended those sessions, but I think it would be wrong to say that the local community is in favor of this particular development. To go from an area that is currently zoned for eight units to sixty units in that area to take a low-density housing area to make it high-density, it would be an unfortunate precedent. I assume the original zoning was designed in a way that was felt to be appropriate for that area. Why all of a sudden is it appropriate to have many, many more units there, particularly when I think it's clear that the traffic can't be handled appropriately? The water drainage, I, I'm assuming is okay, but I think that clearly needs to be looked at. But I think the unfortunate thing is to change the, the whole specter of that area by increasing the number of people in an area that really, really can't be handled. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any more cards. Mr. Harmon, did you want to respond to anything? You still have some time in reserve.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your comments tonight. We, Nathan can, can give any questions that y'all have about the, the full report. We summarized the report, but we sent the entire report again. It has the, the volume of a TIA, even though a TIA wasn't required, but that was shared with the city so that the city has the details of the counts that they determined out there. Roundabout would require a significant amount of eminent domain and taking private property, which, and we're not sure that roundabout would be approved by DOT on that location. We're pretty sure that a traffic light would not, based on the experience of our engineer. Always stop will slow down traffic on Old Chapel Hill, which answers the concerns of safety of the traffic, and it will allow the traffic that backs up on Shannon to actually go faster, and Nathan's study actually shows that bears it out. So I think all of the traffic will generally move a little better, and it will be a lot safer by cutting down the speeds on that route. It is true that for the vast majority of the length of Old Chapel Hill from Garrett Road all the way up to seven fifty-one, that there are no sidewalks at all. It's an old two-lane country road. However, our sidewalk will actually connect with the one in front of the library, and that will give us a continuous sidewalk all the way down to MLK. So one developer at a time will get there over time, but probably not in our lifetimes. I think those are my only comments.
Thank you so much. As indicated, I don't have any other cards. Madam Clerk, do you see anyone on, online in queue? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the gallery or in chamber here with us this evening that wishes to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. Seeing then, I'm going to yield, see if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for the applicant or Councilmember Hyman. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Can you just go over the affordable housing proffer again, because it was kind of going fast and I was.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the offer is one townhome unit and three apartment units. That's a total of four dwelling units. There are sixty dwelling units in the total zoning request, right? Seventeen and forty-three is sixty, right? They, we are not committing, we are not committing for purchase or rent. If, if any that we sell will be at eighty percent AMI, any that we rent will be at sixty percent AMI for thirty years.
Well, but the, the price point in terms of the ones that you're thinking about selling?
If, in, in this market, I think that, I think that a market rate townhome in this rate, in this location is going to sell between five and six hundred thousand would be if they're, if they're sold. And then the, the, the flats that will be on top of the commercial building, however, are going to be much smaller. Studios in one bedrooms is what we're really focused on in our practice right now, just creating smaller units that, that reach some of the market that's not normally, that's not normally reached in, in the luxury, typical luxury housing market. And also, I don't think there are many, many studios and efficiency apartments in this particular part of Durham, and there's a lot of people in this part of Durham, I think, that would appreciate them.
And you said luxury? What did you say?
Well, I'm just saying in, in the quote luxury housing market, where you've got the most expensive housing being developed, kind of on the leading edge of economic capability of the, of the community, the, the studio units are not something that you're seeing a lot of. It's still bigger units and things for bigger families and whatnot, which misses a lot of single people and retired people that would be very happy with less housing.
Yeah, but also they have to be able to afford it.
Yes, ma'am.
Less housing would be able to afford it. And that area is very much, there is a lot of traffic in that area.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? I, um, did you? So I, I want to affirm what, what Mr. Moon and Mr. Anderson said about traffic in that area. I, I had breakfast at Hope Valley Diner this morning, and I like to pretend to drive by Hope Valley Golf Course and pretend that I'll play there one day. Cut through Dover over there. First off, twelve zero from our planning commission. Congratulations on that. But I, I think, and I might not have enough data points to read, read the tea leaves, but there's a, there's a trend occurring. Even if you look at our planning commission and that projects that are focused more on infill development that are not expanding the city's footprint are being looked on more favorably. Ones also include proffers, voluntary proffers for affordable housing, whatever the range. That area and that road is a tough road in terms of traffic, but right down the road is a major shopping center. That area is ripe for development. Folks are going to want to live there. If you can walk to Target and walk to Hope Valley Diner and the post office, there's a lot of stuff there, the stuff that we say we want in an area where we want to make it dense. We, we, we sent something back, an item back earlier, item number twenty-one. We didn't talk about it tonight, but it, that's, that's my neighborhood. So I was going to share that. I, I stop at that, light at Lumley in Miami every day, literally every day. I walk up there sometimes, and I know that the traffic is going to, is going to start to increase, but if, if we're going to be serious about this urban growth boundary, this is the future. This is a harbinger of things to come, these type of developments, infill development, and focusing more on our, our city core, our city center within our established footprint. So, you know, we're going to have to, as I've said before, we're going to have to have a serious heart-to-heart conversation as a city as to what we want our city to look like and what it means to say we're going to be serious about not going out anymore. We're going to have to get closer shoulder to shoulder. We're going to have to go higher. We're going to have to go higher. We're going to have to go denser. And this, and every area is going to be on, on the board, including my neighborhood. It would have been tonight, and I was going to support it. So I appreciate the, the level of community engagement. I'm going to be supporting this project. Again, I think the planning commission got this right, and I think they are, they are a useful kind of bellwether of, of things to come in our city, if we're going to take our comp plan and our, our urban growth boundary seriously. So thank you so much for that. I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council, but I'll yield to my colleagues one last time for any questions or comments. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. A question for staff. I think the first response may be, this is not our department, but I'm going to ask. Would you all say? Let's see, is there a way that you all can provide us like a wealth analysis or socioeconomic status of the overall city when it comes to being able to afford to live in Durham? I'm trying to force us away from... I'm trying to force us into being able to have this conversation more in depth. And I, I've been making some phone calls lately, and I'm just amazed at how much wealth is in the city. And also, I'm amazed at how many people aren't making that much money in the city. And I think that if we had more data to help inform when we're talking about housing and development and affordable living, I think it'll be really helpful. I don't know if that will come from your department. However, we are talking about folks being able to afford to live here, so.
Surely, that is something that our staff can bring more data to you all. In our staff reports, we do provide median sale prices and median rental prices of the surrounding area, but surely we can look into the, the city and county at large.
Thank you. Just, just to add to that, the reason why I'm asking is, at the end of the day, folks are going to go, they're going to, they're going to purchase, or they're going to get what's available. And we are going to need housing at every level, and it's important for us to know what's available so that we can try and mitigate as best as possible on who can get access to those units. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Manager Page wants to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Just very briefly, a lot of times you see us bring information around area median income and some other metrics that we use that are more citywide, but we, we certainly use in a lot of the, you know, analysis that we do, more income levels by census tract. You've seen us do that as we brought forward some of our projects for equitable and green infrastructure. So a lot of that data is available to us as an organization, and we definitely do track it. We realize as the city grows and becomes more diverse and more complex, we do have the ability and can bring additional information to you in different settings to help you make more informed decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, colleagues, for an excellent discussion. This matter requires two motions. At this time, I'll entertain motion number one to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban eight and residential suburban 10 districts and establishing the same as residential compact with the development plan and commercial general with the development plan.
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes five to one. With Councilmember Holsey Hyman voting no.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain now motion number two to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
So moved.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That matter is discharged. Colleagues, that brings us to the end of our scheduled and printed and published agenda. I want to thank you all for an excellent meeting tonight and for good work, with no other matters coming before the city council. Madam Clerk, it's September 18th. The gavel is down at 8:52. Thank you. May God bless Durham. Good night. Thank you so much for being here. Good to see you.